Good evening. I will now call to order the March 3rd, 2022 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting. And with that, Mike Allen will lead us in prayer and Tim Slate in the pledge. Please stand, please.
Love spring. Dear Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day you've given us. Father God, just thank you for this beautiful weather that we have finally received. Father God, I just ask that you watch over us tonight as we do the town's business. Father God, just continue to watch over our first responders. Father, just ask for your hand of protection for the Ukraine people and what's going on there. Father, we just, again, thank you for the many blessings that you have given our town. Father, just as a commission now, let us do the town's business. Father God, just continue to lead and direct us in all we do, in Christ's name. Amen.
Just face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike and Tim. Kevin, citizens' comments?
Not at this time.
We'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes of the February 3rd, 2022 meeting. Counselor, the minutes in order for us?
Form counsel.
Commission, has everyone had a chance to approve? And there any changes or corrections? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion to approve the minutes right second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, minutes are approved. We are now on to new business. Our first item is annexation and plan of services request. Jennifer, speak. Blakeney Commons, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road and Morton Lane, annexation and PUD zoning request.
Yes, this is actually, it's a, it is an annexation request for one parcel of land, and there are actually, are three parcels that are already in the city that's been requested to be rezoned, R3, to the PUD, but it's all one development plan. So it's a couple of different things, but it's all one development plan. It's about 15.3 acres total. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and the PRD, which is the Blakeney PRD and the Cedar Hills PRD in town, and RM in Rutherford County. The landings plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area, as well as a neighborhood commercial node. The major thoroughfare plan does show Rocky Fork Ambleville Road as a minor arterial. An adequate right-of-way will be required to be dedicated as a part of this development for that road, as well as for Morton Lane. Parcel, as I said, parcel 14, which on the map in front of you there is the parcel that's highlighted in blue, is not within the town limits. So it will be to annex that parcel and to zone it PUD as well as, and then rezone the remaining parcels. The three that are yellow there actually zoned R3 to that PRD. This request of PUD, it's for a mix of 80 townhomes and then three commercial lots. Sewer is not available onsite, it'll have to be run, and they are aware of that, but it'll have to be run from an off-site location. CUD is the water provider in this area. A minimum fire flow of 1,500 gallons per minute at 20 PSI is required, and that's because of the commercial element to this development. Not, it would only be 1,000 if it was all residential, but because of the commercial, it just have to have a higher fire flow. The development plan kind of is a mix of the commercial and the residential. The residential would be in the area primarily along Morton Lane, without access as well to Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, and then the three commercial lots would access both roads as well through the private drive and those kind of things. We had a few comments. One, comment number eight on the list there regarding the parking pad, the two-car width parking pad for all the townhomes that have garages. As it was shown, some of them did appear to have the single driveways to the garage. They still have that, but they have added parking next to it. So there is, there is, there is two spaces per unit provided. Plus the garage, on the units that have garages. I think it's 32 units have garages of the 80. We also had a concern, some of the buildings didn't have the two space. Our ordinance does require there to be at least two spaces per unit, has to be within 60 feet of the dwelling unit, and they have corrected that as well. So we can remove comment number eight. The, it's comment number nine was regarding a traffic study. They mentioned within their submittal, the potential for signalization of the Morton Lane, Rocky Fork intersection, things like that, but we don't, we have asked for, based on the development, the size of the development, would need to have a traffic study submitted. There, it has not been submitted yet, so we want to keep that comment, that it would be coming soon, but not yet. Comment number 10, the developer has, has requested to submit a pay, in lieu of putting sidewalks along Morton Lane and Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, to submit a payment to the town in lieu of doing that construction. Staff has looked at that. We would recommend to not do that. We actually, our recommendation was actually just go have for, along Morton Lane, the developer to improve that, including the sidewalk, and then dedicate, but then along Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, basically just dedicate the right-of-way. The town is, we're looking at a project on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road for some improvements there. And so basically, if they would, to dedicate the right-of-way along Rocky Fork Ambleville as we need, and then do the improvements on Morton Lane, and not do the payment in lieu of on sidewalk. That was, that's, again, that's staff's recommendation with regards to that. Comment number 11 is really just an informational comment. They do show parking on the commercial lots at 1 per 250. That may or may not be adequate, depending on what actually ends up being used there. And so we just pointed that out to them, they're well aware of that, and they know that may be changed, might change, depending on, again, on what the uses ended up being on those lots. They had, as a part of the commercial portion of the development, they had, had a list of uses that would not be allowed as a part of the PUD. We asked them to add some additional uses to that, and they did show that, but within the, there's a couple of different submittals on this, and in some of the submittals, they have their original lists, some of the pages, they show their lists we asked for. I don't think any of them have the entire list together. So we'd asked them to look at that and make that consistent, so that, and that still needs to be done. So that comment really needs to remain, because we want to be clear. I think they're not disagreeing with adding the list, it's just some places, anyway, they're not consistent on, across the board on that. And that kind of, on comment 13, we had some comments, just again, some consistency among all the documents. Some, one of the pages, the original submittal had 75 townhomes, but it went up to 80. One of the pages, I think, still says 75. There's, there's just some things like that that we need to be cleaned up, so that everything's consistent across the board on that, just so, as it is a PUD and it is establishing the zoning for the property, it needs to be clear on the front end, so that it's easily to administer as going forward, and it's clear in the record what's being approved and not approved. Comment number 14, they had mentioned that some of the buildings would match the pattern, in the pattern book, and we just, that's, again, that's just an informational comment, that all the buildings will be required to meet our designer's guidelines, regardless of what's shown in the pictures and in the book. And they, they've agreed to that, they don't have any issue with that. We asked the question, they mentioned in the, in the, that there is, that there will be a third-party managed, management on the, all the open space and the private roads within the, everything. We did ask, would the, the commercial lots be included, primarily just because two of the commercial lots, at least, will be using that private road for access and those kind of things. And they have indicated that that would be the case, I would, if that's going to be the case, that that would be included, I guess, somewhere on the plan, I just noted that that would be the case, so it's in writing in the plans. We'd ask them, the townhome, the elevations on the townhomes that they had originally submitted showed all garage units, and since they won't all be garages, we'd ask them to update those elevations, and they have done that, so that we can remove that comment. And then 17 and 18 are comments from CUD with regards to the fire flow in that area, which is not adequate as it's currently set up. So they'll, they will have to work with CUD to, on the fire flow before they can, you know, get any building permits. I think that covers all of our comments. Again, you have, there's a couple of different, there's a smaller package here, and then there's one that's a larger package, again, it's a couple of different things. There's some overlap in some of the information, and again, some of the, some of the stuff does, needs to be made consistent and does conflict a little bit, so. But I think that's, that's all we have at this time.
Okay. One moment. Commission, like to start with questions with Kevin, or, I know you're the developer, and, you know, I want to see if, you know, we want to, where we want to start here?
I think my question is, are we ready to make a decision on this tonight? It seems like there's some inconsistencies and some questions regarding number 10, for example, that, do we need to get into that tonight, or does there need to be more straightening up on this and bring this back?
I think it's, I think certainly it'd be good to have a discussion tonight, just since the developer's here, and he might answer some of those questions for you. I think it would be good.
As I understand it, your staff is recommending if, if we were to approve, that staff would, would want to dedic, have the right-of-way on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road dedicated, correct?
Yes.
And the Morton Lane finished, as far as sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay. So, Tim, I think that would be where we would head with it, as far as trying to clear up that ambiguity there. So, Kevin, a quick question. With what's been presented to us, is it consistent with our comprehensive plan?
Yes, yeah, the overall concept and idea is certainly, that the type of housing and the, and the density is not, it's 80 units in this townhomes, but it's not an overly dense development in that regard. And certainly, we did have a, we had, in multiple places in our comp plan, where we have, may have primarily be a residential area, we still had some areas set aside as likely location for some neighborhood-type commercial zoning, just to provide services closer to where everybody's living, and not having to drive all the way back to the interstate at Ambleville Road, or wherever, to get, to get gas, or pizza, or whatever ends up being there. And so, so it is consistent with our, our comprehensive plan, the overall idea and layout, yes?
I may have another question then.
Okay.
So hopefully I didn't lie then. When we're looking at a comprehensive plan, are we, are we looking specifically at a development, or are we looking at the area in general?
We're looking at the area in general, big picture.
Okay. So we're looking big picture here versus, and we're trying to see if this part fits into the big picture.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin?
Tim, Kevin, we, on item nine, it says submit a traffic study. And then on 10, it says, you know, the issue with Rocky Fork Ambleville, the sidewalks. So if the traffic study comes back and says there needs to be a light there, we're not saying in this approval that they would have to follow through with what comes from the traffic study, just that they have to submit one. So how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I mean, it's, it's kind of always been an assumption, and we've always administered that if a traffic study comes back and recommends a light, it's the developer's responsibility to put the light in. We can certainly spell that out in writing, that wouldn't be an issue, that whatever comes out of the traffic study, the developer's responsible for making those improvements. Certainly, we could, that's, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay. I would suggest that.
Other questions for Kevin?
Kevin, is this property, the commercial property, already zoned commercial?
No. It's, most, the majority of it is zoned R3.
Right.
Right now, and then there's a piece of it that's in the, the part that's, well, the part of the, part that's R3 is being, would be part of the townhome, it's all R3 right now.
Okay. In, in their proposal, they're showing for it to be zoned C2. So it's C2? Is that what they're asking for? And if that is, we, if it's zoned C2 and they don't develop and somebody else comes in, it's already zoned C2, they can put whatever they want there, right?
Well, it's, it wouldn't be C2, the, again, there's the list of uses that would not be allowed, it's, it's.
How would it be zoned then?
It would be zoned, basically, it would be allowed, the commercial uses that are under our ordinance, except for, and I'm, and there's, like, it wouldn't be allowed, well, this one has the, what we'd asked for, the.
Yeah, because the paper they, they got here that I'm looking at says C2, so that's the reason I was asking.
Well, and it's, and it's, it's similar to a C2, but again, not every use that's allowed in C2 would be allowed there. It's more limited, based on, again, various categories of uses, like the construction, sales, and services, that's allowed in C2, that wouldn't be there. The group assembly, which is larger type stuff, you know, assembly like a racetrack or something, obviously not enough room there anyway, but that type of use.
More than likely, it would be a gas station to feed that area, not, you know.
I think that's certainly an op, would be one of them.
Now, that leads to another question. What are they, we gonna do about roads out there? You got gas tankers on those roads, they're not gonna hold up, and there's no shoulder out there now, so is there a future?
Well, the town is working on, and, we're not working on the roads yet, we're working on getting information together for what improvements that need to be made to Rocky Fork Ambleville. Probably some sort of three-lane section or whatever, I don't know exactly what it's gonna be, but that is something that the city is putting that information together right now to do the kind of a corridor study and, and see what we need to do in going into design. It's in design now, so.
Timeframe on that, Charles, what is that? I mean, is it year out, two-year out, before it could get started potentially?
Depending on how it's right-of-way through the existing areas where we already have the dedicated right-of-way, they'll go quicker. So we'll be breaking it up into multiple phases, just depending on how long it takes us to get right-of-way for the different segments through there, that then we'll try to go to construction, and, like I said, small phases.
Okay. Because there's a lot of homes already up out there, plus what have already, is planned to come in.
Right, and they already did the dedication, so the right-of-way's already there, so we can move faster in those segments. And, but the other segments, like across the road, where there's not development, that we would have to acquire that right-of-way, it could slow the sections down. So that's what we're working at now, is the full design from Ambleville all the way out to where Rocky Fork joins in, to do the overall study, and then we'll start breaking it up into pieces for construction.
Okay. Going out Ambleville Road, does it go past Del Thomas, or does it stop there at Kevin Church Road?
We're taking it all the way past Del Thomas, out to where Rocky Fork comes back in.
Okay.
That still is in the county at this time, so, but we are doing the study completely out to there.
That point.
To that point, and then we'll come back and break off phases for construction.
Okay.
It sounds like there's gonna be some timing that would probably coincide as far as CUD being able to upgrade water to even services, correct?
Right.
Does that come out of the rock, that Kevin Church pumping station, or do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I would assume it probably is tied to that somehow, but I'm not really sure.
Okay, any other questions for Kevin? I think you've heard some questions that we've had, and you may be able to walk us through what your thoughts are, and we'll start with, you'll give us your name and address, please.
I'm Kevin Estes. I'm with Land Solutions Company, 2925 Berry Hill Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. And I was gonna come and give a lot of presentation, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna make an adjustment and start with the last thing I heard first and try to work back. So I'm the developer that's done Blakeney, Westover, Stewart's Creek cottages, we zoned Stewart's Glen, the Ringman property in Cedar Hills. So I've been very involved in this corner out here. And then Blakeney has spent a million dollars, that's not true, 1.3 million dollars, we just upgraded the whole pump station along Stewart's Creek High School and improved that whole force main to handle, hopefully, the ultimate build-out of this, the drainage area to that pump station. We also realigned Morton Lane up there at Rocky Fork Ambleville, and I'm just assuming we're gonna put a light in at this intersection. That's in our budget, I'm not, I'm not volunteering for it, but I'm not ignorant to what development We have acquired these properties for a couple of years, Mr. Wadi and Mr. Taki, and Susan and Sean was one of these. And we've kind of just been working with the city as what is right here. So I'm gonna kind of talk you through, you know, at Blakeney, we came in with all single-family development, then we came back and did a rezoning and added a few townhomes. You know, and we started Blakeney, we was like, man, wouldn't it be nice if these houses sold for 300,000, and the townhomes too? Everything's out there selling for 500,000 up, and the townhomes are nearly 400,000 nowadays. And that's, that's good for me, well, for things I haven't sold, not necessarily for the ones I've already sold, but it's good for me, but I am also a guy that when I was in college, I had a dream of owning a $100,000 house. So inflation's insane, house prices are insane, and we are very concerned about where this market's going and affordability. So we talked, when we bought this property, we was very excited about a commercial node, because, you know, the ballparks are full, the park is full, the schools are there, we're probably gonna be 2,500 houses, and further than I can throw a ball, but a very short distance of radius of this intersection. So we was very excited about the commercial opportunities, and the gas station makes sense, some eat-in restaurant-type things makes sense, you know, nail salons, commercial-type services, we're not wanting to, and I think we did a poor job, and I apologize to Kevin of what, saying what we couldn't do, we probably should just put what can be done there, because that list would be fairly short and, and small. And we, and I'm gonna have a request at the end of this, that y'all, it's up to y'all, but that I would request. We're proposing 80 townhomes. The end townhomes would have garages, the interior townhomes would be more like 1,450 to 1,500 square foot, and would not have garages. And the reason we're doing this is, we develop in seven counties, and we're not big guys, but we do a lot of stuff around town, and we are seeing a large contingent moving into middle Tennessee that is price restrictive, and they, they are young, don't have kids, or older don't have kids, and want to have a place they can lock up and come and back and forth to. We feel this is an ideal location for that type of project. So that is what we're proposing, is 80 townhomes with high-end amenities, the outdoor living areas, the fire pits, the walkability. We're totally fine to build a sidewalk along Morton Lane and dedicate the right-of-way along Rocky Fork. We have met with CUD and think we understand the water situation and have a way forward with that. And to kind of wrap up my portion, and then if I haven't answered a question, please ask me, and I'll make sure I answer it. We have, I have been asked, is this gonna be a rental community by a couple people? And that's not our intention. Our intention's to build this community, we're developers. You know, Stewart's Creek, we're selling, Blakeney's selling, but at Blakeney, we get a million people, we turn away trying to rent in there all the time. But we are seeing this economy change rapidly right now, and my nephew's actually been deployed over into Europe, and I did my time in the Navy, and, you know, I hope Ukraine resolves itself very shortly in a good way, but we're seeing interest rates rise, we're seeing gas prices off, so we're just asking not to be restricted. So if things change, we have the ability. The last thing we want is a project to go bad and have no flexibility there. But it's not our intentions today, as we've talked to everybody, for this to be a rental community. We've developed and built and sold everything out there, and I think we have a good track record of doing that, and a good track record of making improvements as needed by traffic studies or infrastructure as are required out there. And then, and then this is gonna be a gated, we decided today, we will gate this community, it will be managed by a third party. Everything on the exterior, the buildings, the grounds, the pavement, the amenities will all be managed, and managed by a home, an HOA, Property Owners Association, and the commercial will have, be annexed and put into the HOA as well, so it's maintained, when the units are maintained. It should be maintained weekly, everything will be done on a weekly basis, and it be kept green, pretty, and everything out there. I think I've addressed everything, Kevin, if there's some questions I missed or any of the planning commissioners, I'm glad to answer any questions y'all have, and thank you for your time.
Do you want to have questions for Kevin?
Just a minute. Question. On the townhomes, you said some of them would not have garages, but they would have parking places?
Yes, so what we did is we tried to create a streetscape along the street where we have tree islands every few spaces, but every townhome has two spaces within 60 feet, they're almost all directly in front of the doors. The ends, about 40% of them do have garages, where they have the 35-foot drive, but they have another parking space right beside it out on the street. And we, I believe, after Kevin's called me out on a couple of inconsistencies, I hope I don't misquote a number wrong, but I believe we have about, yes, here it is, we should need 160 spaces for the ordinance, and we're providing 59 additional spaces on top of those spaces, scattered throughout around the amenities and generally around the unit for guests.
So without, without counting, do you know how many garages, out of the 80, how many will actually have a garage?
Forty. There's 20 buildings.
And you said the other?
No, no, there's 15 buildings, 30 of them will have garages, I'm sorry. There's 15 buildings, so one in each end of each building, 30.
So we have 50 that won't have garages. Okay. And did you say that they were gonna be parking on the street?
Well, it's a private road, so yes, you'll come in, it's a 24-foot road, we made the parking spaces 20-foot deep, and then there's gonna be 12 feet beyond the sidewalk of green space between the parking spot and the front door. It's, yes. I don't know that parking in the streets, how, to, but yes, it would be campus parking, as we would call it.
Okay. Would that be enough room to get a fire truck through there?
Yeah, 24 feet. A typical street width is 22, and I can't narrow subdivision. If they were taller units, we, we sometimes have to go to 26, but these are not tall enough to.
Okay.
And one thing, we made the spaces two foot deeper than, well, actually, one foot deeper than Smyrna normally requires, so vehicles seem to get longer and bigger all the time, so that we can maintain 24-foot of clear space no matter what. Yeah, as it relates to the garages, is that single-car or? They are single-car garages. And we could do all garages, we did them at Blakeney all garages, but we are trying to do a higher design level. But we are trying to do a higher design level here. Now, that Blakeney's not a high design level, I think the world of Blakeney. But those many skinny driveways side by side looks more cluttered than having a streetscape with the parking spaces and tree islands scattered throughout. And I don't mean a tree island, one every 20 spaces, but more like one every six, seven spaces. So it looks pretty well landscaped through there. That was our thought on this one. So yes, the end, the end units will be wider units and they'll have a single-car garage and they'll sit 35 feet from the edge of the road.
And Kevin, that parking pad will be increased from a single width to a two-car parking pad?
Yes, yes, there'll be an adjacent space 20-foot deep right beside it. I believe this is our, this represents exactly how it will look. You'll see the islands, you know, if there's five units sitting here, there are 10 spaces between here and here. So that everything has spaces and then there's an additional space we're not counting when you pull up in the driveway so you can park two in tandem. We just only count one of those spaces because there's so much block that doesn't really count. So you can see, we come in and we have a lot of tree islands through here, pretty regularly spaced to create a streetscape. And then the spaces are 20-foot deep and they are right here in front of the units with the garages, just having the driveways at the end.
Kevin, you mentioned a higher-end product, the way you're doing that. What, what will your exteriors be comprised of?
They'll be, generally, they are brick and stone on at least the fronts and the sides. And if we do bricks on the front side, we'll do with the rear, we will use some hardy in the gables and things to break them up. And typically, what we'll do is the ends will be all brick. We'll use some hardy in the middle on some of the fronts to kind of create a breakup so it don't look like a brick rowhouse. And then we'll use hardy in the gables, but it will all be masonry.
Do you know what the mix is on bedrooms? Are there gonna be ones, twos, threes?
No, they're gonna be, the great majority of them will be three bedrooms and then the middle unit will be two. But the, most of them will be three bedrooms. What, once again, what we're seeing is a lot of people without kids, but they want that bedroom as their office nowadays. I haven't quite got to the work at home, but I still have aspirations of getting there. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've heard from staff and from Kevin, the developer here. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Hey Kevin, you are comfortable with staff comments being enough to address the outstanding items?
Yeah, I think, yeah. I mean, I think the main concern we had was on that payment in lieu on the sidewalk and we're, that's going away. So they'll, to that, I think I'm good with that. And I think, like I said, we just need, they just need to clean up some of the documentation so that we have, it's consistent across the board. I can work with them on that, that's kind of a big deal.
I would ask that if you pass this tonight, you recommend we defer the first reading so that we get time to make sure everything's cleaned up because y'all move so quick. Instead of going to council, I mean, BOMA, I'm sorry. Next Tuesday that we would go to the BOMA meeting after that so that we can make sure we have time with staff to get everything perfected so that when it gets to BOMA, there's a clean booklet for them. That was, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
That was a request you mentioned that you wanted to delay it a month?
Yes, yes. Or delay at one BOMA reading, whatever that is, yes.
Counselor, can that be part of a consideration?
Especially with his request that you could move it to the April council meeting.
If you do want to recommend it, just recommend, but that it be delayed until the April council meeting instead of next Tuesday. As part of the motion.
Are we good, guys?
All right, Tim, I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments adding to number nine that whatever the traffic study comes back with, we'll expect them to follow through and that they will go to the April council meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to approve with staff comments with the addition of, the implementation of the traffic study and the, being heard before the April council meeting. Well, that's tough.
Can I second and add to it?
You'd have to amend the motion.
You would have to amend the motion.
Never mind.
I'm sorry?
Never mind.
Okay. Is that just a second there?
No.
Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
Chairman, I'm abstaining from this, this one and the next one.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have one abstention. This motion is approved. Okay, our next item is Sean Collins, Rocky Fork Amble Road, annexation and R3 zoning request.
Yeah, this is an annexation request, not too far from the one we just looked at. For one parcel of land, it's about 68 acres. It does join the town and a couple of different locations, kind of on the northern side of it, northeastern corner there. And then, then also on the east, another parcel on the east side there at the corner there. That part, those two parcels that are in town are zoned R3. The rest of the property is in the county and zoned RM. Land use plan would again support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. There are no roads affected by the thoroughfare plan here. Annexation of this track would completely surround one track, parcel 18 there. That has not been requested to be annexed at this time. This tract is vacant. There is no, it has no road frontage, but it is a completely vacant tract with just, there's trees on it and that's it. Again, CUD, similar to the other previous request, the fire flow is not adequate at this time. So the future development of this, that would happen, would have to correct that issue before they could really develop and get any building permits or do any building on this. Again, it's, the town would be providing all services here other than water, as it is, would be provided by CUD. So, and I think that's all I got.
Do we have questions for Kevin?
Kevin, when the annexation, don't they put, y'all send letters out to the other property owners there or put signs out or anything?
Well, this one, we, there's no good place to put a sign, so.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, but the letters, yeah, we do that.
Did you hear anything back from any of them?
Have not.
Other homeowners?
No.
Or property owners?
Most of the tracks around it are vacant. So there's, the two that are, have been annexed, I think may have had houses on them, but they're, they're in the process. At least one of them already has a preliminary plat approved for development, so.
It's, it is kind of tough to see where that's located. Is that, do you know if that's where the cemetery's at? Because there's a cemetery right there.
There's not one showing up on any of the parcel data that we have.
It's on, it's right on the road.
Okay. Yeah, well, then, so this, I don't, I don't think it is, but I'm not 100% sure either on that. There's, as far as I know, there's nothing, no, that's not affected by this.
It would be a county. It would be one of the parcels there in the county, I think. I don't think it's been one of the two that's already zoned R3.
Yeah, I'm not, I know.
The cemetery's right on the road.
It's right on the main road. This is back, but still.
This would be behind. Again, it would be accessed most likely. I mean, I assume the adjacent track is not in the city currently. If it ever comes in, would probably come through there or potentially one of the other two tracks that have already been annexed.
If the property owner does not want to be annexed, then we put him on an island.
Yes. And I don't like creating those kind of little holes like that. We've had to do that a few times. With the current annexation laws that we have in the state, we cannot annex that area unless the property owner requests it. So we either annex like this or we don't annex. Sometimes, anyway.
Well, I think that's what we've been dealing with since the legislature passed that. How many years ago?
Nine or 10 years ago now, yeah.
I remember.
I know. I think probably the anticipation is that we'll see some other tracks that will join this and, you know, maybe create that if we were able to do a annexation the way we did prior to the legislature making their ruling. Correct, Kevin?
Yes.
Do you see any negative impact of this whatsoever?
Since it's a vacant tract, I feel okay with it. I think if there was, if we were to go down some long private driveway to get to a house, if there was a fire or something like that, I might have a little bit of concern. But we really don't have anybody living there or anything like that.
So there's no services that we would be providing basically as far as emergency services?
Yeah, just, yeah, right.
Okay. All right. Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I have another question first.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to unpack that a little bit more about the emergency services. I mean, it's in the town and so, I mean, if there's a brush fire there, you guys are gonna have to go, right?
Right. That would be, probably be the only thing that could happen, most likely, would be a brush fire. Because there's no house fire, house or any other structures on the property.
And there's no access to the road in there to it?
None that I'm aware of. I'm assuming there might be some sort of easement or something like that across one of those adjacent. A lot of times these tracks do have either in writing or a prescriptive easement of some type that where they have been accessing it for many years or something like that. It might be the case. I don't know exactly though what the case is.
We have other tracks that are within the town that, that are, I'm not sure contiguous is the right word, but I'm looking at two right now, right?
I mean, there's, it's contiguous in two different locations as far as being contiguous to the town limits, yes. I don't think there's access, I don't know of any way there's access through those to this track at this time. Doesn't mean it couldn't be there as they develop because the road could be stubbed to it and that sort of thing.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interject myself.
Wait, it's, it looks like we're at a point where we have a few questions that maybe you might want to answer for us.
I, I own those two tracks that are in Yallow. This is under contract with Mr. Collins and he and I have been talking about it. But for the city's sake and to make this simple, I would be glad to grant an easement for access across. And it's flat, right, I call it the nine acres and I'm sorry about addresses. I'm terrible with addresses, but Susan's great with them. 9351 Rocky Fork, Carmivale. And it's flat and joins this kind of L-shaped parcel. I, we've been purchasing some parcels to do a larger development if they all come together. It's not there today, but the 68 acres is part of it. And we would obviously provide access to the adjacent property. They, we've talked to them, they don't, they're happy, they don't, they go camp on it. We don't want to bother them. They're, they're very friendly, the 30 acres, but they have no interest in annexing today. But they do want us to provide access if we do develop these 68 acres. So I apologize and interject, but the access would be coming through the nine acres at night, that address that I said earlier, I can't remember. And if it would help with the city, I could provide something in writing before it goes to BOMA granting an access. In case there's a brush fire, which I hope there's not, but in case there is, so that city has access to it.
Other questions? Kevin, what's staff's thought on that?
Well, I think that would be, that would certainly ease that one concern if we did have an easement of some type. As long as it's, you know, it's something that we can actually get a truck on if we needed to, you know, as far as the surface. So we might have to look at that, but, you know, I think that would be something, it would at least give us an access of, something that's, you know, recorded or a verified access to the property if we needed to, which.
Could that be a condition of?
Sure. That's what I'm hearing. Correct, counselor?
Yes, correct.
Other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments including the described easement.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with staff comments to include easement requirements. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have one no and one abstention. Our next item is Zach Wagner, 1-1, let's see, that one's, is that one you pulled?
That has been with, yes, that is not on record or be considered.
Okay. So we're now on the rezoning request? Okay. Our first item under rezoning is Ayub Ishak, DeLacy Place, 12372 Old Nashville Highway, rezoning C2 to PRD.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request on Old Nashville Highway there. It also has frontage on Todd Lane and DeLacy Lane. It is currently zoned C2. They have requested that a portion of that property, about 14.53 acres of the property be rezoned from C2 to the PRD. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, R1, and R2. The land use plan for this area is the Old Nashville corridor area, character area, which would support a mix of neighborhood scale, retail, and personal services, as well as townhomes and attached residential development. So a commercial townhome mix is consistent with our land use planning for that area. The major thoroughfare plan does show Mason Tucker Drive extending as a collector from Todd Lane through the site to connect with Old Nashville Highway at the existing intersection with Rocky Fort Road. This extension would be difficult at this, that location due to the existence of TVA-owned power poles in the area near Old Nashville Highway. So what they have done in lieu of that is to show that extension through the site and to align it with the proposed driveway for Talia Trace, which has been approved, of course, this was looked at by this group last month and has been, has passed first reading. It'll be up for second reading next Tuesday. So they were proposing to line it up with that driveway. So there is, it's still, it's still lining up with something and not causing any traffic conflicts as far as cross, cross conflicts there. Now, this PRD request is for 125 townhomes. And again, there's about 4.27 acres of the overall tract. This would, would remain C2 zoning as it is currently zoned. There is a cemetery on this parcel. And it is proposed as a part of this development that that actually would be divided off. The family that owns this track currently wishes to maintain ownership of that for maintenance purposes and so that it would be divided off as a part of that development. The only, the primary staff comment that we had left was to remain, was to provide a traffic study. They have, that is underway, but it has not been completed yet. So certainly based on what we looked at on the Blakeney Commons, rewording that to include any improvements that are recommended from that study that the developer would be responsible for, certainly would be appropriate, I would think. So. I believe that's all that I have. I believe that's all that I have.
Kevin, does staff have any concerns, the roadway that's lining up with the private drive that Talia Place would create a, maybe a false sense of you've got an intersection where you would potentially be moving folks from a public street to a private drive?
I mean, I think, I don't know if we have any, I mean, our main concern was, we wanted, we felt like it was important to get another access to Old Nashville Highway from all the folks that live on Mason Tucker that's been on the thoroughfare plan. I mean, it predates my time here. Ideally, it would come to Rocky Fork Road, because that's, that's a signalized intersection, and that's big picture, that's, ideally, that's what we would like to see. That's really not a possibility without moving some TVA poles, so, and so that's why we looked at if we could line it up with that, the development that's going across the street, whether it's a private road or a public road, at least having that traffic, where you don't have turns happening from different, and cross, crossing one another and that sort of thing. You know, I mean, I, as far as traffic coming down Mason Tucker, crossing Old Nashville Highway to go through Talia Trace to get to Rocky Fork Road, I mean, I guess that could happen some. They also could turn left and come down to Rocky Fork that direction too, or turn right and go up to Enon Springs and go down to Enon Springs Corridor that direction. You know, again, like I said, ideally, we'd like to see it line up at Rocky Fork, just because that would be the best location ideally, it's just not really a possibility as it's set up right now.
So, the thoroughfare plan originally had it lining up, or had some, if something was to develop to line up there, right?
Yes, coming across and curving and coming around to Rocky Fork Road.
So, you're, but you're saying that even, I want to make sure I understand, are you saying that because of the TVA, that's not possible at all regardless of how this is drawn?
Not unless those poles get moved.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's the likelihood of that?
That's, probably not going to happen.
Yeah.
And they feed that, the substation there.
Yeah.
At the corner, yeah. Pretty important for their purposes.
What is our inventory of C2 right now?
You know, I don't know if I know exactly. I mean, it's, we have, there's quite a bit of it, because most of the commercial property in town is zoned C2. A lot of it is like this, is undeveloped, but it's pretty much undeveloped. They do have, there is one small building on that area there, the landscaping company there. We are seeing it, I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of commercial development along, in certain areas, there's a lot of commercial development that is happening, a small piece at a time, you know, there's not the large shopping centers happening right now, but we're seeing those smaller commercial restaurants and things like that, an acre, two acre at a time, it is starting to, what has been created along San Ridley is starting to develop, you know, a couple of different locations, you know, where, it just really depends on where it's at, and that's the, still the hot area of the town, really, for the most part, as far as the vacant C2 areas.
How does the C2 zoning that's, as drawn, how does that work with TVA as far as a TVA easement there?
Yeah, you can, you would have to provide, the building would have to be behind those buildings, and there's an area there, kind of to the rear portion of what's left is where the building would end up being, and you could park underneath then, those areas. We've got several of those in town. You know, there, San Ridley, near Old Nashville, between Old Nashville and Needham, right through there, there's, that development has TVA here, right in the middle of the parking lot there, and you kind of drive around them and park underneath and around them, so that's how it would really work.
I guess I'm just trying to get a true sense is, you know, every, with what we're looking at here that's indicated as C2, how much of that is really usable, and are we potentially going down more in C2 area that we don't need to, because when we're looking at this, we're not truly looking at what's really available to develop because of the TVA easement?
Yeah, I mean, a big portion of that area that is C2 is, is encumbered by that easement, but again, they, they could park underneath, so I think you would, you would still be able to develop it. But that whole area is not going to be developed as far as buildings are concerned, because you do have that TVA easement that they have to work through.
Other questions from the commission?
Or a comment that, I understand the Todd Lane change, and, you know, the laying it out at Talia Place or Talia Lane because of the, because of the TVA lines, but I'm concerned about the traffic conditions that that's going to create that close to the red light with the other development being done across the street, and then now you're dumping people who are going to be turning right and left, coming together off of Old Nashville Highway. So, I, that concerns me a lot about just how Todd Lane's going to be extended, because you're going to have a lot of people that are going to continue through Todd Lane, down by David Urie, down to Old Nashville Highway. And I, I am also concerned just about the track. I mean, it, it is going to be difficult from a, a land use, it's, you know, it's elevation, lots of rock that'll be cut, I, I just, I look at that spot and would have never thought about building several townhomes in that track of land.
Kevin, the density on this is, did the math right, it's about nine per acre, is that right?
Something, roughly, yeah.
In layman's terms, would that be closer to an R6 than anything, or, I know we're fourteen and a half per acre on an R6, but there's no zone that would be lesser, so really, it would have to come in as an R6 if it weren't coming in as a PUD.
That's correct, yeah. I mean, because that's, that's the only zone that allows for attached housing like this, more than three or more units in a building, essentially, is R6.
I, I guess with the C2 use there, I get it, I mean, there's nothing growing there C2-wise, but to Tim's point, trading out good commercial property for an R6-type product, because this, this is zoned commercial, it's a C2 product, and they're asking for a rezone off a C2, different than what we did across the street, which was not zoned that way, Did we have something before us, maybe a couple of years ago on this parcel or no? I can't remember. It seemed like there was...
I don't think so.
Maybe it was up the road a little bit.
I, I know I've had several phone calls from different people looking at it for various things, typically a residential of some type. I've had apartments talk to me, I've had this type of use talk to me, I've had kind of a duplex townhome-type mix talk to me about it, through the years, I mean, as it's been on the market for several years. So, you know, I've had anybody talk to me about a commercial use, though, in that whole time. It's always been wanting to convert it to some sort, some version of residential. I don't think we've ever had anything, we, this has been submitted to us a couple of months ago as staff, and we reviewed it and had several comments, and they went back and reworked it, and it actually, it's in a lot better condition than it had come to us originally as far as the layout and the, the parking and the traffic patterns and all that kind of stuff. And so, I don't think we've had anything come to us, actually to the planning commission at least, on this property, I don't believe, if I can recall.
And sort of as we see this end of the Old Nashville Highway begin to develop, maybe that commercial property becomes a little bit more visible to business that wants to offer a business to the rooftops and the demographics that are coming down the highway. It is a challenging piece either way, and I understand that.
Yeah, there's easements all over it.
Yeah.
Even the areas they're putting in townhomes, there's, there's some easements there, and just the shape of it is weird, a little odd, so.
With the, Kevin, with the, you know, our new intersection where Enon Springs has continued, and we can, when we drive through, we obviously, obviously can see, you know, how that's going to grow. We don't know what's going to happen, but we know it's going to grow and establish in an, in an amazing way. That has to affect that area, area in a commercial sense, I'm saying.
I think, yeah, I think as, as it develops and as, especially if we can get the interchange, as the traffic patterns change in that regard, certainly, there's going to be more traffic here. There's higher visibility between, as people travel, coming into town from the interstate to Old Nashville Highway there instead of along San Ridley Parkway or importantly Victory. Certainly, that would happen, that will happen as, when that happens. That's a longer-term view, certainly, but certainly, that will happen.
And, and that is our job, to kind of see what we can't see.
Absolutely.
But to kind of, kind of set the tone for what's going to happen in the future.
Kevin, think you gave me an idea about square footage on the homes here?
I did, um...
Thirteen hundred square feet. Minimum thirteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, thirteen.
I, I think we're probably ready for you, so can you give us your name and address, please?
Chris McGuire, Hudson Steel Engineering, twenty-one fifteen Northwest Broad Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Okay.
It looks like we had proposed a minimum of thirteen hundred square feet, which was similar, and, which was similar was approved across the street with Talia Trace. As far as the traffic study, we are, we have the person who did the traffic study for Talia Trace also currently working on the traffic study for this development as well, so it'll have a good, it should have good consistency between the two projects as far as, as how those intersections will work together. And of course, as Kevin said, I mean, we will follow what the traffic study recommends. I guess, were there any questions other than those that I could address? The, the C2, I don't know if y'all have the pattern book in front of you. A good page to look at would be sheet eleven. Sheet eleven shows kind of how that C2 is cut out, and you can kind of tell the area that isn't encumbered by easements. I believe, in speaking with the owner, I believe his intent would be to provide a commercial development that would be, that would serve the townhome area, hopefully a strip center of some type that could have a restaurant-esque service that would kind of provide a one-stop shop for the townhome units that are being proposed. In, in looking at the easements and the locations of the poles, I feel pretty comfortable that we would be able to put in a decent-sized, a little commercial development right there with some, with plenty of parking that would go under the power poles and across sewer easements, which are what we've had to largely try to work around. Commercial development will have a easier job of working through that.
Does a landscape company do... Does that go?
Yes, sir.
So, they're leasing?
I, I believe so, yeah. I believe with this development that that would be sold off, and it's currently in the, I have to look at the aerial, I believe it's actually, yeah, it's right in the middle of that C2 area, so.
Now, you said all the, all the homes there will be thirteen hundred square feet?
Minimum. Yes, sir.
That's the minimum.
Yeah, we, we have some architecturals on the last, I think, four or five sheets that have, not sure if they call it the square footages on them or not, but we did check, they're all within, I believe, thirteen to fourteen thousand square feet. If I remember correctly, I think the least was about thirteen fifty, but...
Well, the ones across the road, it's just the ones on the front road frontage and the back off of Rocky Fork, just a very minimal number that are in that thirteen hundred square feet.
And I believe, let's see, we called it out, but I believe that that's actually a similar intent as to what was done across the road. It's the ones that front Todd Lane and Old Nashville Highway that don't have the garages. It would, it would provide that similar feel where these aren't facing, where you're not looking at the backside of townhomes, you're looking at a nice, it's almost like a front yard, instead of looking at the backside of where someone's got grilling. So, it'll provide the similar feel that was done across the street.
Mark, I know you asked Kevin about the yielding on page two. I don't know that we told a total number, but it's one-hundred-and-twenty-five units at eight-point-six per acre.
Yes, sir. Close to that, that's what I meant, too.
Do you know, how does that compare with Talia Trace right across the street? Do you recall what the density was on that?
It was more units, Chris had more land, seemed like it was in the one-hundred-and-seventy range in terms of our total units. I can't recall exactly how many, what their acreage was and how, what the exact density was. It's in this, it's in the ballpark, I think, though, it was not a, it certainly wasn't a twelve or thirteen-unit development, but it wasn't a four or five either per acre. It was, it's in the ballpark at least.
What's the proposed elevations for the rear of the units? I was struggling.
Page fifteen has the garage units rear on the bottom side of the page.
Is that all, is that all cement fiberboard on the...
It's hardy.
Yeah, it's all hardy, it's a brick and hardy mix.
Yes, sir.
That's what they're proposing.
On the rear, on all rear elevations, brick and hardy or all?
I think it's just a hardy, brick and hardy being overall mix, it's, it's, I think the rear of the units are hardy, with the front having a mix of brick and hardy.
I thought on, some of the units that, if not all at Talia, we required...
We did.
...daisier, grenier.
They, they were in the overlay, Enon Springs overlay, and we did require more. The overlay actually ends at Old Nashville Highway.
We were kind of, if we were to approve this, would we want to be consistent with what's across the street?
I think that's certainly something you could look at, again, but that's from a staff perspective, and we recommended it that way, we were recommending because we were trying to be, since it was in the... We were recommending because we were trying to be, since it was in the overlay, we were trying to be consistent with what was the vision of the Enon Springs overlay was. So, but certainly something the planning commission could add as a condition if that's what you wanted to do. Majority, I do, the front, I mean, he's, he's correct, the majority of the units that will be at least fronting Old Nashville Highway and Todd Lane are actually going to be, you'll be looking at the front of the units, not the rear, so.
Be looking at the brick and hardy mix.
Right. Now, internally, until the commercial develops or whatever, you'll see, see the rear of some of the other units.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still concerned about the density on this. Especially when you tie it in with the traffic and where it is located with the schools With Rocky Fork, with Talia Trace coming, with, with all of that, that's a lot of density to drop right in the middle of all that traffic, so just concerned about that.
Other thoughts?
I think my biggest, my biggest why is the fact that it is a C2 zone. And I just hate swapping C2 for R6, basically. It's my concern. So, not trying to hold on to as much highway C2 that we have without turning it all into residential necessarily. If it's zone C2, I just feel like there'll be a use for it at some point. I realize it's not done very well with C2 in the past, and I think our demographics are changing out that way, and I think I'd prefer to see something C2 come in there that services what's already there instead of adding, adding more of it, so.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a? Go ahead, counselor.
Yes, but it'd be helpful if you kind of give a reason.
Oh, motion to deny because of the density in the mix of the, all the traffic that's already there, especially with all the schools.
Okay, I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor of denying?
Just for clarification, I don't know that we got exactly who was the second. I'm sorry.
Tony.
Tony.
I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second to deny further discussion. All those in favor of denying this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, this motion is denied.
Our next item under rezoning is Eli Waldron, 1093 Industrial Road, rezoning I2 to I1.
This is a piece of property on 3D Industrial Road, currently a vacant tract. It's actually two parcels, and there's a small sliver of the adjoining parcel that has been requested as well. Total's about 2.39 acres, currently zoned I2, and they have, they're requesting to rezonate to I1. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, I2, and A1. The land use plan would support the airport innovation character area, which would support a wide range of industrial and office-related uses. Major thoroughfare plan does show 3D Industrial Road as a collector, and adequate right-of-way does exist for that road. They are proposing, again, it's two separate tracks of land as well as a portion of the adjacent track, and so there would have to be a plat done to kind of dissolve all those property lines and create some new lines before any building permits were issued, regardless of what's built here. There is, they did submit a concept plan, that, they did provide that to us, that it's not, wasn't necessary, but they did it, and certainly that's fine, but this isn't a, that's not a part of the approval of the rezoning. This, it's not a, any type of putt or anything, it's just a straight zoning from I2 to I1 to allow for lesser building setbacks is the primary reason behind it, to give them more usable area from a structural standpoint, building structural standpoint. And so, they do provide that to you, but again, this would be, really it's just a zoning from I2 to I1. So that's just for clarification purposes, since they did provide us that concept. I think that's all that I have. I don't think I said it, but this is, either zone here would be consistent with our comp plan, so either, it would certainly be fine for, from that standpoint as well.
So staff's recommending approval of this rezoning request.
Sure, yeah, it'd be fine.
Is that really the only difference in one to the cabinet's setback?
The uses allowed in those two zones are very similar.
The two would have a few more uses.
I think there's a few more, primarily in the special exception PCA realm than there are than I1. So it, in some ways, it will be a slight downzone in that regard. The main difference is the setbacks, yeah.
It's pretty consistent with what's on up the street, too, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And most of that street has an industrial zone, except for the, the airport across the street.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Several seconds. Have a, yeah, Mike.
Mike, I found.
Got it. Okay. A motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, this motion is approved.
You made it a little easy on you there.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being ready.
The next item is Nayan Patel, Hyatt Hotel, 801 Expo Drive, rezoning C2 to H2.
Yeah, this is a piece of property, it's actually one track and again, a portion of the adjacent track that are both currently zoned C2. The total acreage is about 2.71 between the, the two pieces there. Is zone C2, and all the surrounding zoning is C2. H2 is, would not be a new district, it would be an additional layer, it's a height overlay. Some of the other hotels in that area have, have been given the height overlay in addition to the C2, so the base zoning would remain the same. Land use plan, which is the 24 gateway character area, which again, would support a mix of uses and services, local and regional, including hospitality, retail, restaurant, and multifamily, so certainly is, is consistent and would remain consistent with our land use plan, with, with the overlay. Major thoroughfare plan shows San Ridley Parkway West as a principal arterial and Expo Drive as a collector, and adequate right-of-way does exist for both of those streets. And this request is, essentially is to allow for a taller than allowed maximum building height, 40 feet is what's allowed in C2. The request is to add a height overlay to allow a building of 61 feet, 4 inches tall, which would be the Hyatt Hotel, which is on your agenda later on for site plan review. The fire department did review this, they have looked at it, and they, they have, again, as we discussed earlier, about the 26-foot wide drive aisles, they are showing that on their site plan, you'll see that when we get there, to be able to, if they needed to, to extend to that higher, that fifth floor, this will be a full five-stories hotel. And they also have, there would be access from Expo Drive, and when the adjoining track develops, there will be cross-access to Colonnade as well, so there will be multiple directions they could come to if they needed to, to get to the hotel, so. So, with that, staff would recommend this to you.
Even with this height approval, if you're looking at the topo there, it's kind of graduates up, correct?
It does go up the hill as you come by, go up Colonnade Drive, yeah.
This height won't exceed the heights of the ones?
No.
Okay.
No, because they're, they're starting from a higher place, so...
Yeah, I know that might have been obvious, but I just wanted to make sure we get that clarified.
True.
Well, I mean, if you're looking at it up there, it's all flat, isn't it?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Do we, do we currently have another hotel that's that tall? I was thinking 57 or 8 was the highest one we had.
We've got, we've got several that are five stories now. The first one, I think, was the Hilton on the other side of Hywood there. So it's, it would be very similar to what we've had on some of the others. Some of the others, again, I think this one does have a pitched roof, and some of them have just a parapet walls and things like that, so some of them have different construction that may look taller or whatever, but they're, it's, it's similar to what we've looked at in the past.
Kevin, with that height, is there any need, you said a pitched roof, not a parapet wall, is there any need to hide equipment with a parapet wall, or do we know?
I don't...
At that height?
I don't think so at that height, but we can look at that. I don't think they showed anything on the roof, so, or it's hidden, we can, with the elevations, I think it's a site plan.
You said they would or would not have access from Expo Drive?
They will. Yeah, they'll have access from Expo, and then in the, at some point, there will also be access from Colonnade as well when that adjoining track develops.
But no direct cut from San Ridley?
No direct cut from San Ridley, no.
Other questions or comments?
Just, just one real quick, I know we haven't really looked at this yet, but from a design review, what have you seen?
Yeah, it's a, we had some concerns originally.
I read that earlier.
But they, they've corrected those issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know there were some percentages that were a little higher than what we normally would expect to see.
Right, that's been taken care of.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Thanks.
Okay, me, good.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, this motion is approved. Our last item under rezoning request is from Rob Mulchen, Pet Boys, Lee Victory Parkway, rezoning C2 to PCD.
This is a rezoning request, it's a, it's on a tract that y'all looked at last month for a subdivision purposes. That plat has not been recorded yet, so it's about an acre, a little over an acre of land as a portion of that overall parcel. Currently is own C2, surrounding zoning is all C2. Land use plan, it's same as what we just looked at, it's again, that 24 gateway character, which would, it's a kind of a mix of retail, hospitality, restaurant, and multifamily, kind of, would be the, the idea here for this area. Major thoroughfare plan does show Lee Victory Parkway as a principal arterial, and adequate right-of-way does exist there. This, as we looked at the plat last, last month, is a very similar question here on this. Comment number four regarding the, there is a parcel of land that kind of divides, or to, divides the overall parcel that this will be a part of, that is, is a driveway, a private drive to access the church that's next door to this, and we just did ask for them to provide proof of the ability to use that, because that is going to be the only access to this, to this tract. That would have to come certainly before, with the site plan, and before you build permits could be issued if this is approved. Comments five and six are similar comments with regards to utilities. Five is water, six is sewer. They're not available, that was shown on the plat, is proposed to be extended, that we looked at last month on both of those. And so they, and they show those same easements on their drawings here, and so that will be required to be, you know, in the plat recorded, and those easements dedicated, and utilities extended, you know, as part of the building permit, again, for water and sewer. And number seven, this slot site does largely and almost entirely in the, in the floodplain, so they would have to, as, and there's, with the plat that we looked at last month, there is a plan for a cut and fill to elevate this parcel as well as the one directly next to it out of the floodplain. So they would have to provide a letter of map provision from FEMA as a part of that. So this area would be, again, would be elevated out of the floodplain as a part of the development of the site, so. I think that's all that I've got this time. We do have a fire book that has the, the building elevations and everything as a part of this. I think with the page number, I think it's, which one has the elevation?
Kevin, do you remember what, that parcel next door, what was proposed for it?
Parcel directly next to this is, we don't have anything at this time submit to us. We have the church on one side, and then that other tract is, is still just, will be vacant at this time. I'm sure it's something, but it will come there eventually, but we haven't had anything submitted at this time. And it's page, I'm sorry, page 14 and 15 have the building elevations, it's largely, almost entirely a brick building, with some glass for windows and whatnot.
Access is by a private drive?
Yes.
Who, who's responsible for maintaining that?
Well, that's part of the reason for our comment, it is actually owned by the, by the church next door, owns that track, and they've built it and have been maintaining it to this point. I don't know if there's, as a part of these, when that property was attained by the previous property, to, from the previous property owner, if there was some sort of a agreement at that time that they would share costs or, or what that is. I honestly don't know. At this time, it's, it's, again, it's owned and maintained by the church.
This plat that we're looking at?
The, yes, the drive, that angled area there where that drive is, it's largely on the church property, but then it crosses over to Lee Victory here as a part of this. And they, they do own, they have, it's not just an access easement, they actually own the property.
Okay. Kevin, if I'm looking this right, are all the bay doors facing San Ridley?
Yes, that's, yeah, it's Lee Victory.
I mean, Lee Victory, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, and then on the end, there would be some windows on the back, kind of in that, would be kind of the... would be kind of the, the lobby area for, for customers and that sort of thing, but. It looks like eight doors.
I'm gonna ask a real, probably, it's probably a dumb question. Can that not be flipped? You know, where the, the building faces Lee Victory and the bays are in the back?
Uh, yeah, they would probably have to shift the building closer to the road, um, with, then have kind of some parking, maybe some, still some parking on the front, maybe, but then have some, probably some additional parking, and then access from the back. Um, and they have room there to shift the building forward.
I mean, that's, uh.
There'd still be setbacks.
Rob is here. Rob, can you address that? Tim, do you mind if I?
No.
Thanks.
Good evening, Rob Mulchen, SEC, in behalf of Pep Boys, as Pep Brothers. Um, the, regards to the building, and we're excited at this point in time, you know, this standpoint of this being an automotive services company on that side, that their motif is that they're trying to bring their, you know, the motor, automotive element to the street side. Sorry. So the bay doors are part of their sales pitch in regards to make certain people understand that this is Pep Boys, we're here to do automotive services on that side. In regards to being able to shift the building up and rotating the building around because of the TVA easement and the side, and the shape of this building on that side, we don't have the opportunity to slide that up because the easement precludes us from being able to push the building up. So we're kind of hedged in that corner in regards to that, in regards to bringing those bay doors, one, just from the company's standpoint of being able to see the bay doors and the salesmanship of the bay doors, but the rotation of that building and the space that's left because of the crossing of the TVA easement across the property, that's kind of where the building has to sit on that side based on the footprint.
They want the bay door visibility, and we kind of don't. I mean, you know, so.
I understand.
I mean, we had this come up on one last month, I believe it was, that, uh, that was the drawback on it, because we had, I think, four bay doors facing our parkway. And so, just trying to be a little bit consistent with that. I just wondered if we could, I get their marketing portion of it, but they got a nice big red Pep Boys sign, it looks like, that would, uh, if anybody knows who Pep Boys is, they would know who that is, so. How far is the actual building from the roadway itself?
Whole parking lot.
Well, is the parking lot, it's got a 35 feet setback, right?
It's probably, just from the road itself.
Yeah.
It, you're probably, just in scaling it, you're probably 75, 80 feet from the front property line, and then you're probably another 80 or more from the actual shoulder of Lee Victory there. It's a very wide, uh, right-of-way there, so.
Building is set pretty far back because of size of the driveway.
Probably a good 150, maybe, or more feet from the actual drive, uh, aisles of Lee Victory Parkway.
Yeah, I guess my only maybe difference here is that, and with the Valvoline that we looked at on Sam Ridley, that was on our gateway. I'm not sure that we have designated this as a gateway, have we?
It's kind of the, that 24, yeah, this is kind of a gateway. It's the same policy as far as land use on Sam Ridley and Lee Victory in this area.
What did we do with the plan that we approved with the Christian Brothers that's across the street?
Yeah, that's on the Amalville roadside of, um, and we did approve that one. Um, of course, that was under, that was prior to our new plan.
Right.
Yeah, um, and it was consistent, because we were looking primarily, it was similar in, as far as, this was really more, because we have that multifamily on, this was really more of a, more of a mixture of uses that's allowed now than what we had before, as far as the residential element to it, so. Um, you know, I think that it was, it was consistent with our plan at the time when we did it through Christian Brothers. It didn't have the visibility of Lee Victory Parkway, as Mark's comment.
Okay.
Similar use. Can't remember, I don't know if it was quite as, I don't think, though, they had eight days. It may have only been six or seven.
I don't think they had eight.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask a Charles question, put him on the spot. We've been talking about the improvements to the Amalville exit in the next few years, perhaps, from TDOT and Feds. Do we, that, that is going to turn this into a different way of accessing in and off the interstate, and that could affect the aesthetics of what we place in and around that spot. Do we know the timing of that at all, Charles?
We're looking about two years out for construction. We're currently in design, TDOT's in design with it, and they're looking at a two-year before construction.
Okay.
But it will stay within the existing right-of-way. It will, the interchange, laneage will change, but not any of the right-of-way.
But it will dress it up, so to speak, a little bit, but, uh, I think, is the old bridge there going to be touched at all?
No, sir. Everything is under the bridge, it's just doing the lanes, it's going to be made, just striping and lane change through there, the, nothing else will change.
Rob, are the bays gonna be pulled through or pull in one way and back out?
Just pull in and back out. Single-sided building.
Other questions for either Rob or Kevin?
Just a comment, we're, you know, frankly, I'm just saying, telling Rob, I, I don't have a big issue with the doors facing the main road. You know, we're 150-plus feet away, and, uh, it's pretty easy to see a bay door going down Sam Ridley in similar businesses, so from, from that aspect, I don't have an issue with it.
And I can touch a little bit about the access, because I know that was one of the questions on that side, that is, this is a, as you guys, Kevin alluded to, this is a subdivision that's been, that you guys saw last month on this side. This is just one parcel, the existing property that the church has, that gets back to the church property is more or less our access. Um, our group is going through the discussions and, and legal sides of things, getting all those easements and access easements taken care of in regards to providing that access back to here, otherwise we wouldn't have come forth with this opportunity for this building, so.
Other questions or comments?
Will the doors be cleared, or will they be tinted?
They are, they are tinted window, and, you know, they have, they have, they have like a, like a window band in them, and they have metal on either side, so it's not a full glass exposure on that side. So if you look, if you look at the elevations on there, you can see that they're, the darker gray, that's more the, you know, you know, non-visible metal, and then you got like little glass panels in the, that second and third tier doorways.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
May for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Good, 6-1.
Two.
Two, I'm sorry.
Five-two.
Five-two. Okay.
Thank you all.
We are now on to preliminary plats. Our first item is Greystone Phase 1C, Rocky Fork Road. Owner, developer, Andrew Etheridge, Greystone West LLC.
Yeah, this is just a preliminary plats for the next phase of Greystone. Uh, it's part of their PRD. It's 70 lots on 19.27 acres. Um, we had several comments, and most of these are, are standard-type comments, uh, so like 1 through 5, including, they will be extending Green Tree Drive is, is a part of this, uh, development, and it would be included in this phase as well, and they are showing adequate right-of-way there as, as a collector. Uh, we'd asked for them to submit 911 approval for all the street names, and we have received that. Um, we do have a requirement typically that there's an extra five-foot setback on the sides that have, where there's a public utility and drainage easements, and that's just to be sure there's adequate room in there if, if we need to do any maintenance on those easements for, for whatever utility or, or stormwater is in those easements. Uh, they've shown that on almost every lot, there's a couple, there's one easement there, lots two, between lots 262 and 263, that they have requested that that not be required. Um, we did, uh, recommend that, and we did ask them to, to still show that, and we would still recommend that that be shown. Um, so that's comment number seven. Number eight is really just ask them to show the, submit their roadway lighting construction plan, add that to their construction documents, that would still need to remain. Um, this was an area that used to be provided water by CUD, but it is now Smyrna, and so, that was just a informational comment. Uh, CUD did have a couple of comments regarding an existing four-inch water line, but I think that's already been taken care of, but they did still make that comment, so that's comments 11 and 12. Um, and then, this is, would be served by the Olive Branch Sewer Line, it is under construction, and should be, hopefully, it's gonna be completed this summer. Um, and we have told them, as far as, we won't wait till that's operational before they start construction, because part of this is going to be them having to run sewer from that, that sewer line, so, um, so we would need to keep that comment as well, number 10, so. So again, largely, uh, other than number seven, largely kind of informational and standard-type comments, and then we can remove number six. And with that, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Are we good? I'll entertain a motion.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah. If you give us your name and address first.
Andrew Etheridge, 1718 General George Patton Drive. Um, wanted to ask or make a comment on two things, the grading permit, um, there was a comment about this area, or this 1C would need a grading permit. We paid the grading permit as far as our, is, along with our 1A and 1B grading permit, so I just wanted to make sure that if that.
Sure, if that's taken care of.
If that was already there, okay.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Great. And then, just the comment on the setbacks, the five additional feet, we did, um, on some of those lots, we were able to make those adjustments, but just due to the confines of the site, we really don't have the ability to, um, on those two lots, provide that extra five foot without really drastically changing the size of our home, um, and limiting what we, what we can do there, so I'd like for that to be, ask to have awareness on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, staff's thoughts on that?
Well, the reason for us there, and some of this, we kind of have addressed a little bit, because, um, part of the reason for that is, um, we want to prevent encroachments into the easements, like with HVAC units, we've had, which, the reason for this was added to our ordinance, probably predates me, uh, as far as having that extra five feet. Um, of course, within this pod, those are, those are required to be in the back, so that's prob, that's not a concern any longer. Um, I think, so I think that, that does take care of at least a piece of this, but, um, we do, I mean, it, it really is there just to provide a little extra legal room if we have to get in there to do maintenance on the easement. Um, we have in the past, and it is in our ordinance, that myself, utilities or, or engineering, tonne engineer can review these on a case-by-case basis, and can, we can provide a waiver administratively if we need to. Um, we have done that in the past some, so I mean, that is something that would still be open, even if you all keep the comment, that's still something that we could look at when they really get down to actually building on that lot. It's, it's actually constructed in the ground, we can see what's there, um, those kind of things. And it's still something that could be a possibility for them, that we could allow for something that's a little bit closer to that, uh, easement if we needed to. Um, that's in our ordinance now, that we can do that, so, uh, I would feel better keeping that as, keeping this as a requirement and having that ability to, to still look at it, uh, again, once we really know, you know, as construction happens, sometimes things change, you know, there's, as-built drawings don't always match the design exactly, you know, so, uh, just, that's, so that's why I would feel better about it in that regard.
Okay.
So just so I'm clear, um, you're saying that when we go to get building permits, we could ask for a variance at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? May for approval with staff comments. I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved.
Thank you.
Final plats, Patterson Property Subdivision, Spring Hill Drive. Owner, developer, Sam Coleman Jr.
Yeah, this is the final plat. You all saw the preliminary plat for this last month. It's, uh, 24 lots, uh, R3 zone. Uh, we had, um, a few comments, some of these are kind of standard comments, uh, against Spring Hill Drive is a collector, as we talked about last month, and this would be dedicating the right-of-way, uh, for that street as a part of that, uh, to make that connection happen to the, the schools to the south. Um, we still, would also need to keep comments six and seven regarding the construction plans, and as well as just adding those signatures on the plat. Uh, and then comment number eight, there is a sewer extension that's gonna serve that all kind of along the northern border, uh, to serve the, the remaining property that would be a part of this same ownership, and so that, we'd ask them to show an easement there and show that extension, and they have done that, so we can remove comment number eight. So we would, uh, recommend approval with the remaining comments.
This is consistent with what we've seen prior to this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Do I then have a motion? Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We are now on to site plans. Our first one is Ashton Creek Center, uh, 14461, 451, 441, 431, 421, and 411, Old Nashville Highway, owner, developer, RRC Associates, too.
Yeah, and you all are stuck with me tonight, Mitch is not here, so I'll, I'll be having the site plans, too. Uh, this is a site plan for a commercial, a new commercial building, uh, in C2 zone. They're on Old Nashville Highway, uh, kind of behind Lowe's and, and kind of in front of the Ashton Creek Apartments. Uh, this is an 11,000-square-foot retail restaurant building mix. Uh, it, well, there is a, um, there is a parcel, there's some of the drainage area for the apartments is also kind of a part of this. also kind of a part of this track, and so that relates to some of our comments. They would have ingress and egress from Old Nashville Highway as well as the private drive that does lead back to the apartments. It's about a 31,593 square feet of vehicular use area, so they, about 3,159 square feet of landscaping required, are showing about 4250. Parking required is 80, and they're showing 82, and they do also are meeting the handicap parking space requirements. They are showing trees along Old Nashville Highway, as well as the access drive. There is a type-C landscape buffer which would be required along the rear property line boarding the apartments per the ordinance. Designer view requirements, they are showing all four sides of the building basically to be brick, with about 79% brick, and the remaining is glass for the storefront. We had about five standard comments, which would all need to remain, and then under the staff comments, we, similar to the Pep Boys site, we looked at, because they are using this access easement, we did ask them to provide proof of that, that private drive, so we would need to keep that comment. We asked them to rework the auto turn, that has been done, and it is, fire department has reviewed that, and everything's in good shape there, so we can remove that comment. We do still need to see this, utilities department has asked for us the sewer construction plans, so we need to keep that comment. Comment number four regarding adding the hydrant within 100 feet of the fire department connection to the sprinkler system, that has been taken care of and can be removed. Number five, they are, we asked them to show that type-C landscape buffer along the rear of the site adjoining the apartments, that has not been shown, and they, they're working with the owner of the apartments to kind of work through some of that, there is a detention area in the back for the apartments, and so we did ask them to show that, and so they may want to talk to them about that piece. Number six, loading zone and dumpster enclosure is kind of being built on the edge of the detention pond. There was, on the site plan for the apartments, there was a public utility and drainage easement on that plan for that. We did ask if that was going to be amended, and is the pond large enough to accommodate the commercial piece as well as the apartments? They have stated that their easement was never actually recorded, that that easement doesn't exist, and they also state that the, that pond is large enough, but we, I would certainly want Public Works Department to review as part of the grading plan that that detention pond is sized adequately to serve this additional drainage. There is a retaining wall proposed, we'd asked for those details, so we still need to keep that one. And then we'd ask, we asked, or told them, or requested a sidewalk and, and the curb ramp on the north side to kind of tie into the sidewalks that lead to the apartments, and that's been taken care of, so we can remove comment number eight. So we can remove 2, 4, and 8 can be removed. 6, I think, we still need to keep, because we got to work through that easement issue as well as the drainage, and then the buffer, again, on the rear of the property there. So I can, they may be willing to, or want to address that part of the comment, I think that's the only rule, the main issue, I think, that we need to talk about. With those comments, we would recommend approval with those comments being addressed.
So staff's confident they can work through six and seven administratively?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I think to Mark's point in an earlier discussion, this has been C2, it's been set aside for a while, we're now seeing development in this area, and now I think, you know, we're seeing the fruition of that, where you're having a commercial building that's being brought in that looks to be able to serve some neighborhood use here. Questions for Kevin or discussion?
Not a question really either way.
I'm going to call Charles again to update us on that intersection and that signal, because this is just right there by it.
Are we hearing Charles when he's speaking from there?
He probably had to come to mine as well.
So just to, just to preface him, the Old Nashville Highway and Sam Ridley intersection-
Right, I was out there, spoke to the developer today, they're putting in the sidewalks currently, they started that yesterday and continuing on, they want to get the sidewalks in along Old Nashville Highway before they do the final resurfacing of Old Nashville Highway, so as soon as that's done, they are looking to pave and strike Old Nashville Highway, and then we'll be able to activate the signal. We'll put on a two-week flash and then bring it on.
The one at Genie?
Yes, sir, one at Genie and Old Nashville Highway.
And so, what are we doing at the main intersection now to improve that stacking, just for public's consumption?
Like I said, once they rude this, we will, what the developer do, they'll have a stacking all the way to the second entrance of Lowe's, so it will stack back here, you'll have the left turn lane, be able to stack back that far with a through lane, and then you'll have a right turn lane once you get near the intersection.
Will it mirror the one across the road?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And then later on, when we bring our project in to rebuild the whole intersection there, then we'll be adding additional lanes.
And that's where I wanted you to go, right there.
Right, we're going with that, the plans have been returned to TDOT for final review, so we're at that point, but just what the developer will be putting in, we will get that left Q lane all the way back to the second entrance of Lowe's for now, and then this other one hopefully will be coming on later into the summer, just depending on TDOT's timetable.
That'll improve that intersection a lot on the Lowe's side, the Walgreens side.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you, Charles.
Yes, sir.
That road improvement, will it, the second one, will it go past this development, or will it stop still at the second entrance?
It'll stop at the second, like I said, well, the one that we're coming in that redeveloped the whole intersection.
Right.
That one will come through, we'll have double lefts on all four legs, and we'll have two through lanes on all four legs, and then with additional right lanes once you get up near the intersection.
So from the, coming out of the apartments, you're still on a two-lane road, but then it will widen as you get to that first?
Yes, it'll be three lane, it'll be three lanes all the way up to the apartment drive, because it'll be three lanes up to there, because once the other development happens across the street.
Sure.
That's where the other will be, so we'll have a three-length section there before it narrows down, before it enters the Laverne City limits.
Plus that signal at Genie, that's going to be a big help.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And now for our new coordination system and what we have, we'll be able to coordinate it, Sam Ridley and Rock Springs, put those three in coordination to work together.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or discussion?
Move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Tony, do I have a second?
Second.
Andrew. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. The next item, under site plans, Greystone Amenities Center, Rocky Fork Road, owner developer, Andrew Etheridge, Greystone West LLC.
Yeah, this is the amenity center within Greystone, certainly it was, we looked at just a Phase 1C just recently, just earlier tonight. This is for the amenity center, it would be, kind of be between Phases 1A, B, and C, which is a mix of single-family townhomes. Included in the amenity area would be a community building slash poolhouse, pool, a playground, and a mail kiosk. Vehicle or use area is about 27, 190 square feet, which would mean 2719 of landscaping, they're proposing, just to update there, is 2,832 square feet. There's not an actual parking requirement here, but they are providing 53 spaces, including three handicap spaces, so. Landscape plan does show street trees along lining Green Tree Drive with some additional trees and shrubs, kind of within landscape islands throughout the parking lot. Primary material on the amenity center and the kiosk are both are primarily fiber cement panels with stacked stone near the base of the buildings, pretty much in keeping with the PRD as far as the residential portion of this development. We had some standard comments there, and so we would keep those five, and understaffed comments, we'd ask them to provide the air, the pool and the pool deck on the plans, but that has been shown now. Number two, it's kind of tied to this, as well as really the plat as well, the, there's an area that's going to be in public right-of-way, that is kind of a landscaped area, kind of in the roundabout area, and we had a comment there, that agreement would be required between the developer and the town regarding the long-term maintenance of that, and it would have to be transferable to the HOA when it's created, so it can be passed on. Number three, regarding reduced pressure backflow preventer, has been added there, so that's been taken, we can remove that one. And then comments four and five, again, are some of those same comments from CUD, they really have, have been addressed already with the plans on the previous thing, but they still provided us those comments, so really we're comments, the standard comments, and then comment two under staff comments are really, is what's left here on this one, and with that, we would recommend approval.
Did you have some thoughts for us?
Just, just one comment again on the grading permit, just ask if that be removed as a condition, because that was included, this was included in that 1A, 1B original area.
We'll just confirm that with the Public Works, if that's the case, that'll be fine.
Yeah.
Good?
That's all for you.
All right. Questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Andrew. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries. Our next agenda item is Hollingshead Aviation, Phase 3, 340, 360, Whirlpool Road, owner developer, Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, Hollingshead Aviation Services.
Yeah, this is a proposal, it's actually for two separate buildings, each are 59,800 square feet. They are proposed to be constructed west of the existing building approved back in November of 17. Access to these hangars is to utilize the existing entrance off of Doug Whirlpool Road. There is no actual, or not, the square footage of vehicle use area is not in landscaping, because it's on the airport, we try, we tend to limit the landscaping area on the airport, so that's not a requirement here. They are showing 234 parking spaces, which is what is required, and I can't bet on the, as far as the handicap spaces, seven are actually required, and they're showing eight, so they're exceeding that. Again, from a landscaping perspective, because it is on the airport property, there's not proposed, anything proposed at this time. Architectural elevations haven't been submitted, I know they're proposing something very similar to what was approved back in 17 as far as the metal airplane hangar. We had five standard comments there that would need to all remain. Under staff comments, they did submit water construction plans, there are some pretty, pretty substantial water line improvements on this, and those are under review. Comment number two is regarding the hydrants within 400 feet of all points of both hangars, and that's been addressed, we can remove that one. To the, comment number three regarding the ADA accessible parking and all, and that's been shown and has been corrected there, so we can remove that one. We did ask them on the comment number four regarding the hydrants and the FTC, show those, as well as relocation existing hydrants and fire lines outside of the parking area and drive aisles and all that has been shown, so we can remove that one. Comment number five regarding the hydrants within 100 feet of the FTC and the 400 feet, again, that's, that's been addressed, so we can remove, remove that one. Comment number six, they do show kind of some paved area in front of several pedestrian doors, and we did have a concern about parking and people parking in front of those pedestrian doors and blocking them, and so we'd ask them to show some no parking, striping signage there, and they have shown that. We did recommend also adding some bobblers in those areas, and just to, we just want to be sure those pedestrian doors don't get blocked, so we would need to keep that second half of comment number six. Comment number seven, there's a couple of different fire lines that they were shown that were kind of separated, we asked them to connect those together and for flow and as well as just being able to maintain the system, and so that's been addressing, can be removed. And then number eight, we did ask them, regarding any office or restroom facilities, if there are any in those buildings, they're not proposing any of those. The building code may require them, we don't think they will, but we did have that caveat just in case the building code required it. There's some distance requirements from existing facilities, as well as the number of people and occupant load and all those kind of things, and I talked with our building official today, and I don't think those are going to be required, but we did want to bring it up, because they're not showing any sewer services to these buildings, we wanted to be sure they're aware of it just in case. We don't think it's going to happen, but we did want to at least bring it to their attention, so.
So in summary, where does that meet us with?
It's really, it's going to almost, I think it's going to be, need to look, maybe see the, the actual building plans themselves and maybe calculate an occupant load. The existing hangar, or existing, there's existing facilities in a hangar within 500 feet, which, that's one of the caveats, the only thing is there is it, is how much, how large are those, how many facilities are provided there, and then with the occupant load of these new additional buildings, need to be adequate.
Okay.
That's, that's the main thing.
Okay.
And we don't know exactly what's the size of those, how many facilities are provided, so.
But again, that sounds like you're going to be able to handle that administratively.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I noticed, see John and Saleel Hill, who wants to come up and tell us about the, the building and the impact, or who else? All right.
Good evening, my name's John Black, I'm the Executive Director of Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'll try to be brief, I know you've had a long evening. This plan was previously approved by the Airport Authority Board, so just kind of wanted you to know that. Also, there is a severe shortage of hangar space in the entire middle Tennessee region, so we're very excited about this project. This project will bring a lot of corporate aircraft, which is our target market, to Smyrna, and of course, that translates to maintenance jobs, very high-paying jobs, and it will also support our local industry, because that's how corporate America moves. So like I said, we're excited about it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The occupancy, you know, question or discussion you just had is, hangars are a little unusual because people drive up, they park, they get in, you know, the airplane is already pulled out for them, they get in the airplane, they go, so there's really not much occupancy in the hangar at any point in time besides some of the employees of the, of the FBO pulling the airplanes in and out, that's typically the way it works.
Okay.
I know the engineer is also here, if you have any more technical questions.
John, how many hangars does this give the airport in total?
Well, in total, we have, with the addition of these, I say two, they're really four because there's a wall in between, that puts us up over 20 hangars on the airport. These two hangars, the square footage of these, plus Stevens Aviation, plus the hangar of the Airport Authority's building, plus another, a smaller hangar that was built last year, and another hangar that will probably be before you soon, adds over 200,000 square feet of hangar space on the airport, so it's, it's really a big progression for us.
Okay, any other questions? How many planes can be stored in each, each of these?
They're very large hangars, it depends on the size of the aircraft, of course, but on average, if you had some smaller aircraft and mixed in with the larger ones, I think the plan is, you know, that the one side there where they've got the new ramp built, it's kind of, it will fit up to a Gulfstream 600, so that's, that's a very large corporate aircraft. Actually, I think they already have maybe a deal with one, so as far as number, you're probably talking at least 25 to 30, if not more, aircraft.
Okay. Per, per hangar?
Total.
Total, okay.
Should be, at least-
built, is kind of, it will fit up to a Gulfstream 600, so that's, that's a very large corporate aircraft. Actually, I think they already have maybe a deal with one, so as far as number, you're probably talking at least 25 to 30, if not more, aircraft.
Okay. Per, per hangar?
Total.
Total, okay.
Should be at least five apiece.
Five apiece, like I said, depends on what size they are, kind of.
And based on the growth that you're seeing, what do you envision the number of hangars to be in the next two years?
Well, with the extension, extension of Thunderbird Drive that we just finished, and then Stevens Aerospace is at the end of that, we've opened up an additional 25 acres. So that's kind of our next target area to develop. And within 25 acres, I mean, this is, how many acres?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, so you can see, you know, it's almost double what we're talking about here. So we're, we're pretty excited about it. This actually also fits in with the master plan that we just finished up, so it's, it's a good, like I said, a good progression of, of where we want to go.
Okay. Any other questions for John?
I'll also make a shameless plug, but
Please.
to let everyone know that we did get selected by the Blue Angels, again, for next year, June 10th and 11th, we'll be having the airshow in 2023, so.
That is great news.
They, they love this community, I can tell you that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Anybody that's been around this community knows that the Blue Angels are definitely family to this community as well, I mean, you could just drive by the rec park and see why, I mean, there's a, there's a long bloodline there with the, the Blue Angels and the Thunderbirds coming out to our, our airport and utilizing that, and we're pleased to have them, thank you for all y'all do out there, John.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I think Tim got that, I got that one. I kind of anticipated we might have several seconds there, so.
You're welcome.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion carries. Our next item under site plans is Hyatt Hotels, 801 Expo Drive, owner, developer, Mayan Kumar Patel.
Yeah, this is a, of course, we just looked at this earlier for the height overlay, this is a, a five-story hotel, corner of Expo Drive and Sammerly Parkway, against Centennial property, just similar uses, the joint property is vacant to the west there. Two access points are proposed for development, one off Expo, and then the second being access easement across the western property to the, to the Colony Drive there. Vehicle use area is about 51,000, lower 51,000 square feet, so 5100 square feet required of landscaping, and they're showing 6,308, so they're exceeding our requirements. Our parking required, it's 112-room hotel, so it is required to have 112 spaces, and they are providing 112 spaces, including, including five handicap spaces, which meets the requirements. The landscape plans do show a mix of street trees and shrubs along Expo Drive and Sammerly Parkway, there is an electrical easement along Sammerly, so it's a little bit limited on that area as far as the taller trees, but they all also have additional trees within the landscape islands throughout the site. Again, as we said, on the designer view, there were, so we did have some issues with the designer view requirements as they had initially submitted, but that has been addressed. The, what they have corrected it now to, there is still, it's a mix of stone, ephesus and metal. The primary material is glass and stone, it's about 90% of the entire facade, that means all four sides. Ephesus is about 4% of the building, and then metal is used only as an accent, and can, it can cover no more than 10% of the entire building, and right now it's about 6. So they are meeting our requirements, have corrected the issue that we had previously with the architectural elevations. As far as our comments, again, with some, five standard comments there that would all still need to remain there. Number one, would need to remain under staff comments, that any site plan approval is subject to the height overlay request being approved. Comment number two regarding the, the line size, that's the water line size for the proposed fire line, that's been addressed and can be removed. We do still need to get the full set of grading plans submitted and to provide details on the retaining walls, so those comments three and four need to remain. A, and comment number five has been addressed and can be removed now. Number six, the access easement through the adjacent parcel and the plat moving that property line do, does need to be recorded prior to issuance of the building permits, so we need to keep that one. And then we'd ask them to show the square footage of landscaping provided, and that has been addressed, as I stated earlier, so that's, comment number seven can be removed. So related to standard comments, and then one, three, four, and six, would need to remain, and staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Yeah, I feel like we discussed quite a bit of this when we were looking at it during the rezoning request. Do we have any additional questions? Do I have a motion?
So, I'm just curious about the discrepancy, the request to go to H2 was for a building of 61,4, and on this layout, the height is 68,4, just want to make sure that we're consistent.
Yeah, the, the height, the, the, anything that's basically not heat or cool space, the parapet wall, those kind of things are actually are exempt under our ordinance from the height anyway.
Okay.
So it's really just that area, that, that conditioned space is what's subject to the height limit, and so that's where it gets to that 61,4.
Thanks for clarifying.
Sure.
Good, Tim?
Undid.
Were you getting ready to make a motion?
I was not.
Okay. Do I have someone that would like to make a motion?
I move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last item under site plans is Kim Pilkerton, Kim Pilkerton Drive, owner, developer, Tommy Couch.
Yeah, this is a, a commercial building on Kim Pilkerton Drive, it's about 4,200 square feet, it's, it's kind of adjacent to Mill Springs Townhomes on one side, and then the Smyrna Village Shopping Center up to the west. It is vacant track currently, and they're proposing one access off Kim Pilkerton Drive. The vehi, vehicular use area there is about 8,125 square feet, which would mean 813 square feet of landscaping, they're proposing for 1457. 21 parking spaces are required, and they're providing 21, and then one space, or one handicap space is included in that 21. The landscape plan does show trees lying in the eastern property line, along the multifamily development, and the street trees along Kim Pilkerton Drive, with shrubs as well. The architectural elevations, it is a brick building with fiber cement along the, the roof line, on the front and side. The rear of the building, they are showing ground face masonry, which is a, considered a secondary material, is approved under designer view. We had some standard comments which would need to remain, one that's a little different there, is there's, there's, the parking that's provided here is really just kind of a, for retail, and we would recommend, there's not adequate parking here for any restaurants, and so that's, that's one comment in there that I did want to point out. There is, they were, there is, we're going to have to acquire sewer access easement from the property owner to the east, and so they, we asked them to provide that documentation prior to issuance of a building permit, so we need to keep comment number one under staff comments. Comment number two, the material and industrial enclosure details would be, that has been addressed, and it would be brick to match the building, so that can be removed. We did make a comment that any future restaurant would require a 1,500 gallon grease trap, but they're not showing any of that, but again, that's really kind of informational, they would have to provide additional parking if they wanted to provide a restaurant anyway, and they're aware of that, and they're, they're not proposing any restaurants in this building at this time. There is, Militancy Electric does have an easement on the west, I'm sorry, the east side there, as you're looking at the property to the right, and then we did, they do need to, they can't landscape in that easement, it does have to meet those Militancy Electric requirements as far as the height of the plants and those kind of things, so we, comment number four would need to remain. And then that, there also is a, that, because it does border residential, they would have to have a type C type buffer, and there, that is not there, the loading zone actually takes up a lot of that area. They have requested that they basically have put up a fence in lieu of, some sort of type of screening fence in lieu of the landscaping buffer there, is what they have requested, that the planning commission consider that. And then number eight, we did have some concerns because of the loading zone, it is, basically you pull in from the property, it's immediately to the right, as it is, it also leads up to the dumpster enclosure as well. You know, any large truck is going to be forced to basically back out of that into the, the road, and so we had some concerns about that. They did provide, as, as far as they're resubmitting, kind of a, an auto turn with some, like using a box truck or something like that, which, you're assuming that all the deliveries would be by a box truck when you did that, and so I think, which could be the case, but I mean, there's no guarantee of that, and so we had, we did have some concerns about that, and so we did recommend against this, due to that concern about the, primarily the loading and unloading, as well as we need to work through the site, or work the process on that, the buffer that's required, so. They, assume there may be here, someone is here to represent the project that may have been able to address some of those concerns, but that's, that is staff's recommendation.
Your name and address, please?
Robert Passarella, 615 Heather Place, Nashville, Tennessee.
Um, do we, do you know at this point in time, this is a retail building, and is there an anticipation that it's only box trucks, or do you, do you know at this point? What would actually be making a delivery here?
Per the architecturals, it's going to be separated into four separate spaces. I believe you can see that's 4,000 square feet, so it'd be about 1,000 square foot of retail each. We wouldn't anticipate for that size retail center to expect a lot of semi-traffic coming in and out of the building, mostly small vans and about 30-foot box truck to keep retail supplies stocked. We did have a auto turn exhibit of a 30-foot box truck pulling in, pulling towards the handicap space and then backing into that zone. We also provided a auto turn exhibit of a garbage truck pulling straight in, being able to unload the dumpster and then backing out, and then pulling straight back up onto
And you're asking for a fence in lieu of?
Either the approval of the site, excuse me, the landscape plan as shown now, or a fence in lieu of, the way that, or, excuse me, with the Middle Tennessee Electric easement right there, we cannot plant large canopy trees anyways, which will kind of require some, or prevent it from being fully screened, so there will be some gaps in the landscaping to where you'll see the adjacent apartment building as well, so we ask for a fence to fully screen from our property and from theirs.
Okay, any other questions?
Can we get a scale out of here?
Yeah.
About how far is the dumpster from the back porch of the nearest residential unit? I'm sorry, I put you on the spot.
That's okay, I had to find out what the scale was on the drawing. Well, it is approximately, just as it's shown, it's a little over 30 feet to, the buildings, for those adjacent buildings aren't shown, so I can't say for certain, but, but there is a sewer easement there that they, that I'm certain that the buildings aren't in, so that's about, it's a little over 30 feet to the eastern edge of that sewer easement, so at the closest, it would be a little over 30.
Okay.
It may be bigger than that.
So we're going to have a big truck pull in and unload a dumpster 30 feet off somebody's back porch?
Um, I'm not sure how far the buildings are from our property line, I believe from street view, they seem to be a good bit, definitely further than 30 feet, from my recollection, I cannot tell for, tell you for certain, but I do believe that they are further than
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Kevin, in regards to landscape buffering, when we're going from a C2 to a residential, have we not been fairly consistent with, I guess, holding that to the standard that we've set?
Um, we have, there's been a few cases where we actually have, in lieu of something being planted, if there was a lot of existing landscaping, allowing that existing landscaping to kind of stand in its place, if that's not really the case here, there's not a lot of existing landscaping, I think there may be a little bit, but not a lot. Um, you know, I'm trying to think, it seems like we did have one case many years ago where it was a PO-type development, it wasn't a retail, where the residential that was adjacent was a house, and they actually requested a fence, and they wanted a fence instead of a landscaping, and I think the planning commission did approve that, but that's many, many years ago, I can think of at least once that's happened, but typically, it has been required, the ordinance does allow for the planning commission to approve a fence in lieu of, I mean, that's certainly something that's within your purview if you wanted to do that.
Now, is staff recommending we, we do that?
I mean, I, I would like, I would rather see the landscaping, I, I still have a concern about the, I still have some concern about the, the loading zone, I think it would almost have to be a smaller building to make it work probably, but typically, a loading zone is, is not adjacent to, it's behind the building, or it's, you know, I like their, I understand why they put the access where it is and not on the other side of the building, because there is an access that goes into the shopping center directly right there, so they're trying to separate those access points, so I understand that, so and then if you put it in the middle, it really breaks up your parking lot and makes it hard to park, to have enough parking, so I mean, I understand why they put the access point where it's at, because the optic, the easy thing would be flip the access to the other side of the building and put the dumpster and everything on the other side away from the residential and all that, and I would feel, I would like that better, but.
Well, I think Tim was making a valid point at that when, when he was getting at, you know, how far away is it? And I guess I have concerns about loading as well, and I'm trying to, you know, in my mind visualize what happens if we're getting emergency vehicles in, and we do have something larger in a box truck here, as, as an also, but, you know, the reason that we look at landscape buffering between commercial and residential, of course, is site, I think it's, you know, the lights that accompany a, a commercial lot, and also the noise, so we look for, for those, that buffering, especially when we've got established residential that is adjacent to it.
Just trying to put myself in the, in the shoes of the residents right there, I would not want to get woken up on Saturday morning with a dumpster, okay, maybe it's not 30 feet, 40 feet from my back porch, I would be ill.
Other comments or questions?
The way shipping is today, I'm not sure that they could guar, there are no guarantees there will be big trucks that will have to deliver to there, so they're going to have to park in the road.
Meaning they could be delivering to several different businesses along the route?
Either just one.
Yeah.
So, they'll put them on whatever truck they can get them on to make that shipment, get it out, and I'm not sure that's going to change anytime soon. If it's a small truck or a big truck, there's no way they can dictate to the trucking people, I can't have a big truck, that meant I get deliveries for, you know, a long time, so the only place they do have to park would be in the roadway, and that's not a, not somewhere we want somebody to park for any amount of time.
Okay.
I can appreciate trying to fit a place of business on this lot. I cut through here sometimes, I'm very familiar with that spot, but I'm going to ask, I'm not going to approve as is, my, just my opinion is, I'm going to ask if, can they go back and try to redraw it and come up with a better outcome?
Okay. Any other thoughts or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny.
Second.
And a second. I have a motion and a second to deny this request. Any further discussion?
Do we have to tell you why?
It's always helpful.
Okay. Can you tell me why you're doing that?
The dumpster?
Yeah.
And the delivery of the big trucks.
Okay. Good counsel?
Fair.
Okay. A motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is denied. That takes care of site plans. We're now on to the March bond review report.
Yes, and due to the length of the meeting, thankfully it's a short one this time, just have three. First one is Woodcrest Section 5. Did talk to the developer there, they're hoping, they had a contractor, has been hired, and he's hoping to get all this work completed in the next five to six weeks. If that happens, we would be happy to reduce this one to 10,000 and extend it one year as the maintenance bond, otherwise extend it six months. Villages of Green Tree, Section 3, I did, in the intervening week, I have been able to talk to the developer there. They, they are trying, hopefully they said that we may be able to complete the work prior to the expiration date, but if not, just extend it, so we would, our recommendation had been to extend it six months. We would have the same recommendation here that they, again, as we did on the Woodcrest 5, if they are able to complete it, to reduce it and extend it a year as the maintenance bond, but otherwise extend it six months at the same amount. And then Buckingham, Section 2 Phase 1, this is actually the end of their maintenance period. Again, he had, same developer as Woodcrest, they have indicated they had, contractor's been hired to complete the work in the next five to six weeks. If they're able to do that, we will be happy to release that one, if not, to extend it six months, and that's our recommendation.
Questions for Kevin about the bond report?
Just glad it was a short one.
Would that be percluding a motion? I move to approve the bond report. I have a motion to approve the bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
You're just, you're just right there.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bond review report. Any further discussions? All those in favor of approving the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is, is approved. Okay, other business?
I don't have anything else.
Jeff, anything for you, sir?
Just want to make sure.
Anything from the commission? Stay in adjourned.